Good morning. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm council president. And before we have our council meeting at times, before we have our council meeting, at times we recognize special events, special people in our community, wonderful things that are going on in our city. And this morning, I'm joined by my colleague, council member Andrew Johnson, who has a special presentation to make. So I'll turn it over to council member Johnson.
Thank you, council president. So my colleagues will note that so far in my three years, I think I've done about two resolutions. And so it's interesting to be able to do two in one day, but these are both very important moments to recognize in our city. And I want to first have our guests join us up here for our Coldwater Springs Protection and Preservation Resolution. We have Sheldon Wolfchild and Susu Jeffries. And if you have any other guests, please come join us. Now, for those that don't know about this, is the mic on? Hello? All right. So for those that don't know, please come on up and join us. For those that don't know about Coldwater Springs, it's this incredible natural site, both inward 12 and just outside as well, in the unestablished territory. And it has been flowing for over 10,000 years. I first personally learned about it when walking through the woods and I stumbled across in the winter, this waterfall flowing that was just beautiful and something about it, while all the other water in the area was frozen. And it was an area that I came back to time and time again. And I am honored today to be able to have the privilege of presenting this Coldwater Springs Protection Preservation Day with our guests. So I'll go ahead and read it, and then we'll do some introductions and any thoughts and words you have. So Coldwater Springs Protection and Preservation Day. Whereas Coldwater Springs is the last major natural spring in Hennepin County and has been flowing for at least 10,000 years, furnishing water to plants, animals, and humans. And whereas Camp Coldwater was the first European-American settlement in the Minnesota Territory due to the spring which furnished water to Fort Snelling from 1820 to 1920. Or from 1820 to 1920. And whereas Coldwater Springs is a Dakota Tribal sacred site and part of the Bedote origin landscape of the Dakota Oyote. And the ethnographic study commissioned by the National Park Service recommended Coldwater as a traditional cultural property. And whereas the American Indian Religious Freedom Act of 1978 protects and preserves religious rights and cultural practices, including access to sacred sites, freedom to worship through ceremonial and traditional rites, and use and possession of objects considered sacred. And whereas the 2001 Minnesota Coldwater Protection Law mandates that neither the state nor a unit of metropolitan government nor a political subdivision of the state may take any action that may diminish the flow of water to or from Camp Coldwater Springs. All projects must be reviewed under the Minnesota Historic Sites Act and the Minnesota Field Archaeology Act with regards to the flow of water to or from Camp Coldwater Springs. And whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation has recognized Coldwater Springs as part of the natural, or the national treasure that is Bedote Fort Snelling, and Coldwater is a national historic landmark and on the National Registry of Historic Places associated with Fort Snelling. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city of Minneapolis reminds all government agencies to honor both the spirit and the letter of the American Indian Religious Freedom Act of 1978 and the 2001 state law relating to the protection and preservation of Coldwater Springs. Be it further resolved that October 10, 2016, is hereby declared to be Coldwater Springs Protection and Preservation Day in the city of Minneapolis. So I'll pass the mic down and we'll have some comments.
My name is Sheldon Peters Wolfchild. My Dakota name is Old Man Star. My family comes from Black Dog Village, who is our, Black Dog is our grandfather, which is just down the river from Fort Snelling. And we are very grateful for, as Dakota people, the Dakota Oyote, to have the city council and the city of Minneapolis do this resolution because it recognizes our ceremonial understanding of spiritual belief system, which is our foundation as Dakota people. And our water is sacred. Our water is very sacred. It starts from there in our, in our spiritual teachings, the earth, the water. That's who we are. And by doing this, you become a relative as well, when you, when you think in terms of the sacredness of water and what's going on in Standing Rock to this very day, national and international process about the sacredness of water. So what you are doing today is recognizing that sacredness of water, just as the Dakota people, Oyote, do and all our First Nations people do. And we all want to thank, thank the council, the president, for the courage, your understanding, and doing this process to, to recognize our sacred sites. We're very, very grateful. And the last thing I would like to mention also is that we, our sacred sites are in Minneapolis and St. Paul. And Coldwater is just one of the, one of our sacred site areas. Bedote is the center where the rivers meet. And so it's all sacred to us. And I come from the Medawakitan Band of Dakota. And so we originally are from here. Our creation story is right here in Minneapolis and St. Paul, where, where we began life that the creator gave us. So there's a, we go back to the beginning of creation. And so I would like to also offer a documentary that I did that calls The Doctrine of Discovery. I have an EDU package for all members of the council that you can take home and watch at your, at your home at your own free will. It is our intention through this film, which has been very successful, that it touches the basis of history from 500 years back. And the majority of churches now have all requested to have the Doctrine of Discovery rescinded. We also met, we also met with the Pope on May 4th at the Vatican, and they're having his lead bishop attorney, they discussed at a two-hour meeting with our, our 10 elders that were represented for all different nations. And they're looking to rescind the Papal Bulls of 1493 that caused the process of what's happening today, what happened in Minnesota, what's happening at, in South Dakota with our water. The story tells our, our version of the 500 years of history. And so we've gotten to the Vatican, we've gotten to all the churches in, across the country who have unanimously voted nationally to rescind, to have the Papal Bulls and the Doctrine of Discovery rescinded. And I offer this film to the council to please accept as a gift from our Dakota people and all First Nations people, to look at the film in a whole different perspective, which was, was not taught, has not been taught in our history books. So we all suffer from the historical truth. And so in a good gesture, we give back in our way, in our culture, a gift back. In this way, we're offering this back to the council and the city of Minneapolis to have this film. And about five or six years ago, the city of Minneapolis sponsored my showing of my other film, The Causes of the War of 1862, at a theater across the street here. And it is my wish, if, if all possible, that the council could consider, once viewing the film, to consider hosting another film of this, of this film. Well, I just came back from up north last week, was host, the Bremmer, the, the foundation up, up north sponsored the film showing, the Bemidji State University, also other universities. And so we have, this film is now being given to colleges and universities, not only in many, in United States, but in Canada. The professors are using this film and the EDU package to now develop their, their semester classes in, with using the film as the foundation of that study. So it's a tremendous thing happening right now for all First Nations and people, a huge, huge process that we are now all going to watch and see what's happening with our First Nations people, the correctness of 500 years of history, and other elements in our sacred way. And so with that, again, wopita tanka to all of you. Thank you very, very much for this great day in honoring our sacred sites. [speaking Dakota]
Thanks, Sheldon. I'm Susu Jeffrey. I'm with Friends of Coldwater and the Coldwater Committee, which is made up of people from the Mendota, Dakota Community and Friends of Coldwater. There are two construction projects that currently threaten the underground flow to Coldwater Springs, despite all the laws. One of them is a VA project for incoming damaged veterans. I don't think they went through the process, which is delineated in the law, the state law, 2001 state law. And the other is another Met Council project. The last Met Council project, Coldwater lost 46,000 gallons a day, about 35 percent. So we're down to maybe 80, 85,000 gallons a day. This is a 10,000-year-old spring. This is a national site. And besides, it's sacred to the Dakota Oyote and it's the birthplace of the state of Minnesota. It's the site of the first American cultural settlement that happened in the Minnesota Territory before it was a state. So this is the birthplace. And we know that what happens to the water happens to the people. And I have this little vial of water. I was down, out in Standing Rock last weekend, and I collected a little water to remind, it's in the Mississippi watershed. I'm 70 percent water, so are you, so is the surface of the earth. So what happens to the water happens to the people. So we want to take care of the place for the children. So remember the water. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Now let's quickly grab a picture together here. We have one more.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And we have one more of relating to another deeply spiritual issue in our city. If we could have our guests come on up, please. We're joined today by Reverend David Breeden and, I'm sorry, and Mike Ellis. And before us today, we have a resolution declaring Reverend John Dietrich Day of 2016. So I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the First Unitarian Society of Minneapolis was formed in 1881 to provide a pulpit where doctrines radical for their time, such as the theory of evolution, could be preached by Reverend Henry Simmons, a minister constrained in his previous pulpit from preaching the same message. And whereas the First Unitarian Society's first church was built in the heart of downtown Minneapolis in 1887 at the corner of LaSalle Avenue and 8th Street. And whereas, effective November 1, 1916, the First Unitarian Society called the Reverend John Dietrich, driven from a previous pulpit, for having opinions so contrary to orthodox religious doctrine that he was accused of heresy, to his pulpit where he became one of the nation's leading proponents of humanist thought. And whereas, strong attendance at the First Unitarian Society services necessitated moving to downtown theaters in order to accommodate participants and ultimately to its current home in the Kenwood neighborhood. And whereas, for a century, the First Unitarian Society has been a national voice for congregational humanism, actively participating in interfaith dialogues with other Minneapolis congregations, with members making important contributions to myriad social justice causes which have strengthened Minneapolis. And whereas, the First Unitarian Society stands on the threshold of its second century on the leading edge of congregational humanist thought, carrying on the work, spirit, and legacy of Reverend John Dietrich. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city of Minneapolis encourages all residents to reflect on the benefits Minneapolis derives from being a home for those whose thoughts and actions challenge us to be a just and compassionate community. Be it further resolved that the city of Minneapolis declares November 1, 2016 Reverend John Dietrich Day in the city of Minneapolis.
I just want to add that our national body, the Unitarian Universalists Association, has voted to repudiate the Doctrine of Discovery, and we are committed to educating people about that issue. Most people don't know that Minneapolis is the cradle of humanism. Yes, it was an idea that had been around in the 19th century, but in 1916, First Unitarian Society voted to become a humanist congregation. And thus, we have for 100 years been doing that. Dietrich was nationally known, very popular here in the cities, and went on to help sponsor the first Humanist Manifesto in 1933. And thus, we are also the birthplace of what is now unknown as secular humanism. So all of that movement is based in, here in Minneapolis. And sometime you want to look in our archives, it's a great fun to see how the heresy of humanism came to be in the Twin Cities. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I would like to call our employees up if you'd like to join me up here, that'd be great, our customer service employees. This week, we are declaring, this council meeting, we're declaring this week, October 3 through the 7, Customer Service Week in the city of Minneapolis. I'm joined by some of our employees, we'll introduce when we're done. Some of you come over here so everybody gets on camera. Customer service is so important. People call us every day for a myriad of reasons, probably the most calls that we get are through our 3-1-1 system, which is about five years old, six years old? Oh, 10 years, okay. 10 years old, 10 years old. That's been a wonderful addition to the, the work that we do in getting people through the system in the city of Minneapolis. We're a very diverse city, a very complicated city, and so there are many, many places that people touch the city. And so 3-1-1 has been a great addition to the ability of citizens in the city of Minneapolis to access the things that they need to take care of in the city. The other thing that I would say is that when we do our citizen surveys, the direct question that we ask people is how, you know, how do you find dealing with the city of Minneapolis? And we always get really high remarks from people about their ability to interact with our employees. And this customer service framework is something that is shared across our enterprise, and we want everybody in our city, as they touch our residents, the people that work in our city, the people that come to visit our city, in a very friendly way. And they do. So I want to thank our employees for the good work that they do. And I'll read our resolution here. Whereas, city employees involved in meeting the public for the purpose of conducting city business are the first line of communication between the public and the city, and the image of the city is created by the quality of initial contacts with city employees and may influence the public's overall opinion of what services are received for their tax dollars and may influence the voter's support of future city initiatives. And whereas, if that first encounter is professional and courteous, benefits accrue to both the city and the individual in the normal course of business. And whereas, because customer service employees must occasionally endure unpleasant comments, as we all know, from irate citizens while maintaining a calm, respectful, and problem-solving attitude, they should be recognized for their skill in dealing with complainants and people requesting information and services. And whereas, they have proven their value to the city and the public by discharging the duties of their employment with patience, commitment to quality service, and efficiency. And whereas, every department in the city serves customers, including residents, businesses, visitors, workers, and other city employees. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis, in support of its policy of excellence in public service, is fortunate that its customer service employees are integral part of the city's workforce. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Minneapolis, that the mayor and the council do recognize October 3 through 7, 2016, as Customer Service Week, and urge the public to take time to recognize the tireless efforts of the city customer service personnel who work diligently to cooperate with and inform a diverse citizenry. So thank you very much, and I'll turn this over to our 3-1-1.
Thank you, council president Johnson. Excuse my voice, and council members. I'm here today to represent the, I'm not going to say represent the city, but 3-1-1 and the Week of Customer Service and our partners within the city that work with our customers, our citizens throughout the city of Minneapolis. Thank you so much for taking your time to recognize this week is a special week that we recognize as well. I brought some of my employees today, Teresa Strong, Nancy McGrath, Terry, excuse me, Deborah Hudson, operation manager, and Teri Sutton, customer service agents. Again, thank you again for recognizing this and, and as rest as, as the rest of the city for our customer service work.
Thank you very much. I also see another 3-1-1 employee, my constituent, Leah Longshifty. So thank you for joining us. And again, it's the face of the city when people call, and it's so important to have courteous service, and we get that all the time from our employees. So thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order, call the roll.
Council member Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Is absent.
Johnson.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Council member Yang is here, he's going to get my computer, so let's record this being here. We have all members present this morning. A next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and I have two motions to amend the agenda. The first is a motion to amend, to include under resolutions, a resolution recognizing lights on after school day. And this is one of these requests for the 35W Bridge lighting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, I have a resolution that is a resolution, and I'll pass it out. It is a resolution by myself that will go under resolutions, finding that council member Conno, hosting, council member Conno's posting of contact information stored in the city's constituent relationship management system on her Twitter account violated the ethical aspirations but not the substantive rules of the ethics in government ordinance and dismissing the ethics complaint. Is there a second?
Second.
To amend it? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda is in order?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And I wish, if someone, Mr. Clerk, if you would notify Ms. Trammell, that we will need her up here during the resolutions part of the meeting. Next, we have on the agenda, excuse me, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. The reports to the standing committees are next, and the first is the committee of the whole, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items on the agenda for today. The first is passage of an ordinance, amending Title II, Chapter 20 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to administration personnel, adding a new Title VIII entitled, excuse me, Article VIII entitled Classified Service. Item number two is passage of a resolution directing employees, elected officials, and members of city boards and commissions to watch the political activity ethics video. And I will move approval of both items.
Council vice president has moved the committee of the whole report. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council member Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report. That committee is chaired by council member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Services, Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 14 items for approval this morning. I want to make a special note of item number three, which is the land sale for Green Homes North Round Six, which is our final round of Green Homes North. We're making 12 land sales under this resolution, and I will note that that will bring the total number of homes above the 100 homes to 106 homes sold in Green Homes North. Other items include business-made simple changes, rental license denials, and a number of grants, including the Emergency Solution Grant recommendations. So with that, Madam President, I'll move items one through seven and nine through 14 for approval, and hold off on item eight for an amendment.
Council member Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report in its entirety with pulling off item eight for an amendment. So let us deal with the report, and then we'll deal with item eight. Any discussion on any of those other items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council member Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. That report is adopted. Next, on item 8 then, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I will move item number eight and yield to Councilmember Gordon for his amendment.
Councilmember Gordon, on item 8.
Thank you, Madam President, and Councilmember Goodman. All the council members should have the amendment before you. It's CDRS Committee Number Eight, Establishing Recycling Shoot Requirements. This is a resolution that was passed by the committee, and there was even some discussion about adding this provision then. The main change that we'll make here, I guess there's three changes. One is adding Frye, Conno, and Palmasano as authors. Another is cleaning up a little sloppy language in one of the whereas clauses that you can note, but the significant amendment is that we not only do we want to require recycling chute in new construction and major renovations, but we want to encourage developers and builders to incorporate organics recycling into their designs and ensure that its accessibility is as convenient as the locations where garbage and traditional recyclables are collected. This isn't a requirement necessarily, but it's encouraging builders to do so. Happy to answer any questions and share more details if folks want to.
Any discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Then on item 8, as moved and amended, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee has brought three items for consideration today. The first is approving the appointment of Far Toon Willie from Ward Eight to the Public Health Advisory Committee for a term beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2017. The second is authorizing an amendment to a contract with the Minneapolis High Representative Council for chronic disease prevention. And the third is authorizing a cooperative agreement for funding for community engagement pilot projects between the city and CenterPoint Energy and Excel Energy. This is a first significant vote we've taken on some of the work of the Clean Energy Partnership, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee has brought three items for consideration today. The first is approving the appointment of Far Toon Willie from Ward Eight to the Public Health Advisory Committee for a term beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2017. The second is authorizing an amendment to a contract with the Minneapolis High Representative Council for chronic disease prevention. And the third is authorizing a cooperative agreement for funding for community engagement pilot projects between the city and CenterPoint Energy and Excel Energy. This is a first significant vote we've taken on some of the work of the Clean Energy Partnership, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will forward eight items for consideration this morning. The first is a legal settlement. The second and third items are acceptance of low and responsive bids for the Target Center Network Installation and the Fire Department's Washer-Extractor Improvement Project. We also have authorization for an issuance of an RFP for security guard services at five different city facilities. We have three contract amendments. One is with the Police Command Center at 511 11th Avenue South, and the other two are related to software companies expanding scope of services in terms of those agreements. The final item is number eight. It's a grant acceptance from the ASPCA and a contract with MWI Animal Health for equipment and supplies at Animal Care and Control. I'd like to move all eight items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will forward eight items for consideration this morning. The first is a legal settlement. The second and third items are acceptance of low and responsive bids for the Target Center Network Installation and the Fire Department's Washer-Expector Improvement Project. We also have authorization for an issuance of an RFP for security guard services at five different city facilities. We have three contract amendments. One is with the Police Command Center at 511 11th Avenue South, and the other two are related to software companies, expanding scope of services in terms of those agreements. The final item is number eight. It's a grant acceptance from the ASPCA and a contract with MWI Animal Health for equipment and supplies at Animal Care and Control. I'd like to move all eight items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items from zoning and planning. Item number one is approving an application for an interim use permit at 2 Dowling Avenue North, subject to conditions. Item number two is denying an appeal for the Alatta's project at 200 Central Avenue Southeast and approving the conditional use permit and variance for the floor area ratio, in addition, adopting the supplemental staff findings that are in our packets. Item number three is passage of an ordinance amending Title V of our Code of Ordinances related to aircraft noise attenuation. This is moving these regulations from our zoning code to our building code. Item number four is passage of an ordinance amending Title XXII of our Code of Ordinances related to the Parkland Dedication Ordinance. And item number five is approving the Minneapolis 2040 Civic Engagement Calendar with a staff direction asking staff to come back through the council if there's any significant expansion of our planned engagement activities for the comprehensive plan update, and I will move items 1 through 5.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Resolutions, and the first is the 2016 Cold Water Springs Protection and Preservation Day Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Reverend John Dietrich Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have before us the Resolution about the fixed complaint, 2015 number 44. So Ms. Trammell, can you join us at the -- oh, yes, I saw her come in. The resolution is in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the resolution or to introduce the resolution? I'm sorry.
So moved.
Okay, been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this point? Let us get a report from Ms. Trammell, if you would, about the information contained in the resolution, if you would please. Just a summary, I think, is fine.
Chair Johnson, members of the city council, this particular resolution that's been introduced sets forth a finding that the three ethical aspirations sections of the Ethics Code have been -- that there's a finding that those sections have been violated, but it also finds that there has not been a violation of the substantive rule of the Ethics Code, which is Section 15.100, the use of city property. In this particular resolution, with the finding that there's a violation of ethical aspirations, there can be no discipline imposed, and then the complaint would essentially be dismissed. You can only impose discipline when there's a finding of a substantive rule violation. Now, the open meeting law requires that, having preliminarily considered this at the closed session, any further discussions about any potential imposition of discipline for any violations be conducted in public, so that's why this meeting, this matter is being held in public today. But the open meeting law also says that you may discuss data that is not public at a meeting that's subject to the open meeting law, which this council meeting is, without liability or penalty if the disclosure relates to a matter within the scope of the public body's authority and is reasonably necessary to conduct the business or agenda item before the public body. So you may discuss things today regarding this resolution and the complaint, Ethics Complaint 2015-44. However, if you take the action in this resolution, the effect is that the complaint is then dismissed and no discipline has been imposed. The city considers all of its elected officials employees for the purposes of the Ethics Code and the discipline to be imposed under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. If no discipline is imposed on a complaint against an employee, the matter remains not public data. And so if any of you are asked about this complaint after this meeting, the only information that can be given out is that, yes, we had a complaint, and the status is that it is not closed. The resolution remains a matter of public record, but you cannot discuss the complaint. And so those are the intersections between the open meeting law and the Government Data Practices Act.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Councilmember Conno, do you wish to speak?
No, Madam President, I do not.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, with regards to this issue, I just want to say a few things. One is, in light of Councilmember Conno's email to the council or to yourself, Council President, and others, I didn't appreciate that. I have to say that we're elected officials, you know, we're not all perfect, but in this instance, I mean, I would say, you know, it rose above the level that I would, I guess, not expect something like that from an elected official with regards to the posting of people's personal information. In my view, looking at that, just thinking, you know, whether it was retaliatory or not, I mean, it appeared that way, and when you do that, I mean, you lose the faith that people have in government. And, you know, I think what was most egregious about this whole thing was that there just was no remorse, and that just is concerning in a lot of ways. So, you know, with that being said, I mean, I just, I just think that, you know, in terms of, you know, one of our colleagues violating ethical aspirations, or however we want to put it, you know, I think, I mean, to steal a page from Councilmember Conno, even if we as a council body don't impose discipline, I would hope that the good folks in Ward Nine will take care of it next year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I move that the city council adopt the resolution determining that there was no substantive violation of the city's Code of Ethics in the matter of Ethics Complaint number 2015-44 and that the matter be dismissed. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under New Business, we have Minneapolis Community Development Agency Housekeeping Ordinance. Councilmember Goodman gives notice -- oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Trammell. Councilmember Goodman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to planning and development, repealing chapters dealing with obsolete fees and entities and programs, and updating the chapter dealing with the MCDA to reflect changes due to the creation of the Community Department of Community Planning and Economic Development. That notice is given. Next, we have announcements. Anyone have any announcements? Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President, and I have an announcement that is an acknowledgement of some of our employees at the city of Minneapolis. As we know, we now have an Office of Equity and Inclusion that is part of our city coordinator's office, and that office has been working to augment things that our departments are already doing to promote and incorporate racial equity into their daily practices and offerings for employees. In April of 2016, our city coordinator's office of equity inclusion launched a five-part Foundations of Equity Training Program. This is a course that was open to all city staff, and it was designed to grow the capacity of our staff to think critically about racial equity and apply this deeper understanding to the work that is done throughout the city every day. Topics that were covered included unconscious bias, diversity, marginalization, micro inequities, and generational differences. We had a lot of participation in the program, and I just want to acknowledge that because all city departments sent staff to participate in at least one of these offerings. So this was a commitment of our city, and our department has to say, yes, we want our Foundations of Equity training programs. So that was a significant investment of their time, and again, from their departments, to say, we want our employees to gain the knowledge from this program. And we have a second round of the series that begins in January of next year, and dozens of city employees, I think just around 100, participated in the initial offering, and we already believe that there will be many more who want to participate in the second round of offerings. So just wanted to acknowledge that commitment of our city employees, acknowledge the employees that did complete the five series course and have received a certificate, and I want to thank our city coordinator's office for their commitment. We have Joy Mar Stevens, who has actually led instituting this program, Foundations of Equity, from the Office of Equity and Inclusion, and thank her as well for being here, but also identifying something that apparently was very attractive and needed for our city workforce. So thank you very much, and to all those participating employees.
Any other announcements? I lost my screen. Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order, and it's motion to adjourn to the next regular scheduled council meeting, October 21st.
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned.